It is six seventeen and I would like to start the July twenty second, two thousand and twenty four Dartmouth Planning Board meeting with a roll call vote. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis?
Present.
Kevin Mellow, yes. So what we will do is we'll start our agenda in room three fifteen at six thirty. We will take a recess from this. We will go to room three oh four, wait for the select board. We will interview the two remaining candidates that are left because Meghan got a position. She was one of the applicants and she's on conservation now, so she won't be in the contestants. Not that it's a contestant, but she won't be interviewing.
Okay.
So administrative item number one, planning department operations. I've met with Michelle and Ross. Ross was concerned. He felt much better when we mentioned that we will have an interim. I keep calling it an interim, somebody until we find a replacement planner. That, I guess, is a hot topic because it's a consultant. Well, it's a consultant acting as the interim. And we will have that person a maximum eleven hours per week. It will be a place for Ross to be able to reach out to, a person for Ross to reach out to, and get some guidance. And then when larger things come in, that person will, and I keep saying that person because we will be discussing that position with the select board also. It is our decision, but they did ask as a courtesy that we discuss it with them. So they already have a boilerplate. We've done this before when Donald Perry left, when John Hanson left, when Christine left the first time. We've done this before. This is nothing, nothing new. We can't not have somebody in that pool. It's too big of a role. So they'll be, they'll be acting as the consultant to review everything, get our minutes, you know, make sure Ross is getting everything, knows everything that we have to get, our timeline, that type of thing. Any questions?
No, I'm sure that we're gonna hear it tonight and then I imagine after we come back, we might take some correspond, not correspondence, but discussion about who we're gonna have.
Yeah, either that or I believe that the select board have also asked to have some input and voice their opinion. So we may be discussing it in there.
Okay.
I believe that the final will be up to the four of us, I believe.
Okay, as it should be.
Yes, yes. But again, I don't mind.
I don't mind.
I don't mind showing respect to the select board.
No, I don't either.
I don't.
I mean, they have every right.
They're doing it.
Right, exactly.
And they will be, so the town administrator is the one who, you know, I won't be monitoring hours. I won't be signing time cards. I don't have that. The charter doesn't give me that power. That will all be handled by the co-town administrators.
Right.
One way or another, so.
Question, will the interim planner be part of our meetings? Or better yet, will our meetings be part of the requirement, although it's only eleven hours per week?
We can discuss, we can say that that's a requirement. I mean, everything's videotaped, so we can talk about that. I mean, if the four of us, you know, or after tonight, the five of us want to have them on the meetings, we're still doing Zoom. We could make it part of it.
Okay.
I don't anticipate any longer meetings, unfortunately. I was getting ready for our next big, you know, try to find out what this board wanted to be the next big ticket item because the last accessory dwelling units went so well. Let's try to get something up and running for maybe next spring or next fall. And that's what I was hoping we'd be discussing. I don't, personally don't want to make any big moves like that until we have a full-time.
Planner.
Planner, yeah. You know, a full board and a full-time planner. We had discussed last time not filling the board place, see? And I was told that we have to because town charter says it must be done within thirty days.
It's been longer than thirty days, though.
Been a lot longer than thirty days, but now that it's been brought to light, now they're saying we have to, which again.
Okay, just answer my question.
Okay, that, that's why this is not like, I don't want anyone to think I flip-flopped from the last meeting. We, full intended, you know, I really think we were all on the same page. Why bring somebody in?
Todd.
It's gonna, you know, now they don't have anyone to go to. Now they have an equal say in who we hire, but they don't know what the function of that person is. And at this point, all four of us are pretty well seasoned. We, we.
None of which, though, prevents us four in the meantime or interim for coming up with what we'd like to see next year. In other words, we can start, correct? The four of us can start discussing what the next top three items will be?
Once we have the new board member, the five of us could, sure. We certainly could.
Sure.
But I don't know if it's gonna be any really heavy, you know, hidden. We can come up with a list. I think we should take a step back and, you know, maybe discuss it, you know? What's on our hot button list? What, what's our?
Sure.
What do we wanna do? So I don't know if it will be something as ambitious as the accessory dwelling unit, which should have been fairly simple, but it took.
Sure.
I don't even know, five years, six years to get?
No, no, not that long, was it?
No, since it first came to mind.
Oh, maybe first came to mind, but, you know, we, I worked, we worked on that for about a year this past year.
We come up with, we maybe.
I think we should come up with a list, Kevin. I mean, I don't know about the rest.
I don't think it should be a systemic halt in our thought process because we don't have a planner or a fifth member.
Right.
When they join us, we can bring them up to speed as to what we've been brainstorming about, right?
As of the next meeting, whoever gets appointed tonight will be an active member. If they perform what they have to, they have to get sworn in, they have to do that. So we'll have a fifth member and then come up, I can ask Ross to do that for the next meeting. Have everybody brainstorm, let's spend some time brainstorming and say, okay.
We should.
I think so. I think for the next meeting, we should do that because there's some things, you know, what I wanna do, okay? Everybody knows they're sick of hearing it already. Over fifty-five, I'm very strong, I feel very strong about that. And I know we kinda put that on the back burner, but I'd like to at least maybe try to get something going on.
And we already had something started.
I know we did, we did. So maybe, yeah.
Did we put that on the back burner on purpose? Is, was it before I got here or just since? I know.
We, our priority list put the accessory dwelling units first.
Came first.
So we focused on one thing at a time.
Sure. I'm with Margaret.
We thought that would be easier to, to do too than over fifty-five, okay? But I'd like to go back to that.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, I really would. I mean, you know, we've got, what is it, thirty-eight percent of the people in this, this town are over fifty-five? It's a high percentage. And, you know.
Considering we don't have numerous over fifty-five projects, it's a high number.
A high number.
Yeah.
So, you know, okay. Yes, I'm pushing on it. So we're gonna push.
Yeah, so, so we can do that. I, I'm hoping everybody read Christine's.
Yes, it was very good.
Yeah.
You know, update in operations update. So, you know, if people could stop in and check in on Ross. I don't wanna say daily, I don't wanna create a schedule, but I'll try.
Me too.
I'm gonna try stopping in a little bit more often to say.
I go by here a lot.
What's going on.
I have no problem.
So he had a prior commitment, couldn't join us tonight, which is fine. I mean, it was kind of last notice.
Is he gonna come to our meetings from now on? Is he gonna be a participant with the Zoom?
Well, that's what we should discuss.
Do you wanna discuss that after?
Well, we can discuss that after or we've got about three more minutes. So the consultant agreement can wait until after. We can have the consultant come or we can approach Ross to have him in via Zoom to sit in and give the, the mean, basically the updates and step, stand in as Christine.
Huh, gonna think about that because sometimes we, we really, sometimes we probably wouldn't need the consultant every single meeting. But, you know, that's my feeling, but.
I mean, we, we don't have to come up with any set rule. I can talk to him about it.
Yeah.
I mean, if you guys feel comfortable, if I look at the agenda and say, okay, we have no, we have no, maybe that could be our trigger. If we have a public here and we want the consultant to be here. If we have no public, only administrative.
Yep. Then we don't need them.
We don't need them. And if we're just gonna brainstorm, we don't need them.
Right.
So at this point, why don't I do that, public meeting?
Agenda driven, yeah.
Right. I think that's a good idea.
Who, who, who drives the technical reviewer committee?
That was Christine.
Christine, planning board.
And Ross.
And Ross, yeah.
So.
So if, let's say if somebody comes in and says, hey, you know, I wanna, I wanna do something, whatever it may be, how, how is he going to react? Or how should we coach him to react?
So he's going to reach out to me? He is going to then have, I'm gonna have him reach out to the consultant for things like that. But I want him to not reach out like every thirty minutes. He's gonna have to, you know, when we have the consultant, my plan is the three of us would either sit down or, or discuss it over the phone and say, okay, how's this gonna work? How can we work with all of this? You know, if it's somebody who's retired from the position that's coming back to do it, you know, that might be more flexible. If it's Christine who's starting a new job, that's not gonna be very flexible. If she's starting a new job somewhere else, he's not gonna be able to pick up the phone and say, oh my God, someone just came in. He's got my cell number, my one and only number, and I want him to call and text me. None of it's.
Right.
None of it's a big deal.
I don't think any, any of it's urgent.
No, I don't.
No.
Because the, like, the, the only thing that I, I'm kinda concerned about is what is, what has a timeline? Like a formal application.
Absolutely.
One of my concerns was that if somebody decides that now the time is ripe to try and get something through and, and, you know, take advantage of the fact that we don't have a full-time planner.
He, he will be watching. Ross is very comfortable, very well versed in the timeline.
Right.
So that's, and we have the whiteboard up and the date. He's not gonna change anything with the way the office is running. He's been with Christine long enough that I feel comfortable that he knows. So I feel, I feel that we're, we're well-covered.
Okay.
With him. We just have to work out.
Tactically.
Yeah. Yeah.
One thing that I would, at one time, we've all sat in a review, I think, I don't think you have, you said, okay, but you sat on a review, I haven't. And of course, they were, she was asked to stop doing that by someone in the town who's, I believe, no longer here. But that might be until we get a full-time planner, that one of us, you know, we take turns and one of us sits on.
Great idea.
Review board.
Yep.
Only because then if there's something that.
It's another voice, yes.
Okay, so that's, that's up to, you know.
I, I don't, I, I think we, we should never have stopped going.
I agree, but somebody complained very, very loudly and it stopped, okay? So my feeling is maybe we can get permission to have, and we'll all take turns.
Yeah, I, I enjoyed it. I work from home, so.
Yeah.
We can bring it up in the other room too, so that we can now say we have the blessing of.
Okay.
The select board.
The select board. We're not running amok.
Okay.
So it's six thirty-two, so I think I need to have a vote to take a recess of our regular meeting and reconvene in room three oh four.
I'm moved, second.
Okay, motion made by Kevin Estes, second by Margaret Sweet, all in favor. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes.
Motion to reconvene or meet in?
Second by Nick Cyclopatis. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. So let's jump over the consultant agreement because, as I mentioned, two different people from the, the select board said, you know, yes, it is our choice, but they'd like to discuss it.
Okay.
So, so I think that's worth it, worth.
Yeah.
We can go on to agenda item number three, the waterway, water dependent license, ninety-one A, chapter ninety-one A. Any questions on this application?
Pretty straightforward.
It is. Flex cove. It's an aluminum gangway which goes out to a pier. Not really in an area where the public could be walking. There is six-foot clearance underneath, so it does not, if the public is walking in that area, I feel safe that that's, they have the right to do so. No questions from the board?
No, I think it's pretty, I mean, I don't have a question, Mr. Chair. I don't know about anybody else.
So we'll be asking Ross to send the letter to the EPA? Stating that we have no problem and signing off on it. Okay, so do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Margaret Sweet.
Second.
Second by Kevin Estes, all in favor. Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Kevin Estes and Margaret Sweet are the only ones that can vote on this next one to accept the minutes of our July eighth.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made by Margaret Sweet, second by Kevin Estes, all in favor. Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
And Kevin Mellow, yes. Anything interesting about the correspondence? City of Fall River, New Bedford, or Westport?
No, just, I think just that with really, I think I read something in here that's coming before the ZBA. I think it was in here. I read so much sometimes, I confuse it, but didn't, isn't there something going on Fons Corner Road? Tomorrow? Am I correct on that? Car dealer, dealership?
Did you say tomorrow?
Wednesday, I'm sorry. Maybe not.
I see a variance on Kennedy Street, single family.
Okay.
I see a variance for ninety-six Bryant Street.
Okay, then that has not gone through, that has not, it's.
I'm just going through.
It's gonna be heard, yeah, it's gonna be heard tomorrow, I mean, Wednesday.
Approval of use variance, Pere, um, zero Fall River Road. So nothing here in this package about.
Yeah, no, not.
A car dealership. Was it anything that you were?
No, I guess it's gonna be heard tomorrow, I believe, the twenty-fourth. I'm just curious, I'll, you know, to see, not, I have any feelings for it one way or the other, it's just, it's the old Rose Auto. That's gonna go before this, I believe it's the zoning board tomorrow, which is another, a new car dealer is trying to go in there. I think that's Wednesday.
I read through that from the, from the.
Zoning board, the agenda?
Not the agenda, it was on our, from the meetings that Christine was doing. That's where I first noticed that.
So I, I think that's gonna be done on, I think this is coming Wednesday.
What location?
You know, on Fons Corner Road where Mr. Rose used to sell cars?
Okay.
Right there.
The old cars?
Yes. Yes.
They have a cell phone tower? That, that's, it's, it's a.
On the way to Hawthorne after, it's after.
Yeah, it's after.
After.
After Ventura.
That's right.
After Ventura before Hawthorne.
Right, right.
Oh, yeah, 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 it's just before the new development.
It's Matty from Fall River and Volkswagen and Audi. He sells.
Yep.
So that's, that'll be an interesting one because, only because of the cell phone tower, because they can't take that cell phone tower down because that cell phone tower, you know.
So what I saw was from the reviewers committee.
Oh, I didn't.
I didn't, so I didn't see, what, what is the variance necessary? I mean, it was a car law, it's gonna be a car law.
I think, I think that they needed a special permit, I think, okay? And I didn't read the whole thing, but I think, even though, I, I believe Mr., I don't know when Mr. Rose passed, but after two years, you need, you need to get something done if you haven't been using that property, so you have to go back in. And I believe they're going for a special permit, but I'll look that up. I think that's it.
I mean, they're gonna need to come to us for site plan review.
Yes.
But that's a different story.
Different story.
Altogether.
Right.
We're not granting them a, a special variance, a license.
We're not doing anything like that, no.
We're, our turn will come for site plan review.
Yeah, yeah, they're going for.
It's an interesting lot for, an interesting place for it. It's a very narrow but long, very deep property, but it's not very much.
But you've got, you have to work around that. And I looked at the plan roughly, you have to work with that because that cell phone tower went up when I was on the ZBA and I wanna say it's a ninety-nine year lease, okay, because they renewed it. So there's no way he could take that down and move it, it's impossible. So, you know, I looked fast and I'm just curious because it's nice to always learn these things and see how they, how this guy is gonna handle and where he's gonna, how he's gonna build his dealership around it, you know? It's interesting.
Yeah, I, I'd be interested to see if anyone in the public has any concerns over it.
Concerns about it, yeah.
There are extremes in dealerships though, these days. I mean, Tesla's reinvented the wheel with small footprints, small show rims, no, no inventory on site. You know, a footprint and a sign and an Audi representation on Fons Corner Road with a dozen cars just might be enough for them.
Right.
I'm being a little bit facetious, but the, the approach has changed for some.
Right, and, and Audi dealership is sought after. It's not like.
Right.
Oh, I'm buying a new car. Nobody wakes up and says, I'm gonna buy a new car today and buy an Audi.
Yeah.
Though they're, you know, that, that's just not what they're doing.
Traffic count doesn't matter, you're going there for a reason.
You, you're right, you, you are buying.
Sure.
Buying something different.
I have to share this with you, if any of you have ever been to Colorado, Denver, Colorado. The first time I went there, my son lives in Colorado, and I looked at car dealers, you know, I was just riding down the highway. They build gigantic buildings and all the automobiles, like here you have them on the street.
They're inside.
Everything's inside, you've been.
No, I believe it though, as soon as you said big buildings.
Inside, okay, and they have elevators that bring the cars back. They do that in Germany too, it's amazing.
I had that when I was a kid, it was called Hot Wheels.
True story.
Hot Wheels.
Very true.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I said, cause not thinking, I said, how the hell do they get the cars out down here? And they have these, boom, bring it, you wanna drive that car? Okay, we'll get it, bring it down, just like boats. They do the same thing with boats.
Sure, the rack stores.
Rack stores, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So they don't use that much land up in Colorado for dealerships. So maybe that's what he's gonna do, who knows? I really didn't look at the plans that much.
Okay. It will be before us soon. So Westport continues to send us their notices, the hot topics, because I'm spending a little bit more time in Westport these days. See consistently become the whole Airbnb and short-term rentals.
Oh, they're still.
Very hot topic. They, there's a group within town that has the not in my backyard, I don't want them in my backyard mentality. They were trying to ban it forever, completely. They tried to ban it to minimum seven-day stay and I believe now the current version is a minimum two-day stay, which.
A minimum of two days?
Minimum, uh, minimum two-day stay, so no overnight stays. And I, I don't, you know, I do Airbnb when I travel all the time. I don't think owners want a two-day, uh, a one-day stay because they're cleaning crew, it's, it's, you know.
You've got a cost to turn it over, you've got.
Right.
And plus it, it bangs up two days of renting.
Right, right.
Because you're gonna ride over one day and hopefully you get out, then it's gonna be cleaned.
Right, so they are saying a minimum two-day is their minimum stay. I've asked around here, I haven't heard that they're a problem in Dartmouth. We asked the police in Westport and they said they have zero calls. There were zero arrests, zero problems. It's much easier to get a problem Airbnb personnel than it is to get a problem tenant out. I'm monitoring it, I'm watching it, love for some feedback. I mean, I, I hope we don't have to do anything in town, I really, I enjoy staying in it and I think it's good for the economy. I think it's good for our people, you know?
I, I hate to imply this, but I'm confused and perplexed over the fact that you can't really monitor or improve anything in life that you can't measure. So the effort that's going into two days, seven days, short-term, long-term, while we engage in that, who behind us or in front of us is gonna be watching this? How do I know that my effort here over three or four Mondays and some deliberation and maybe having a difference of opinions is gonna have any impact or effect that's gonna be meaningful to anybody? That's where I'm confused and I'm being transparent. Because anything we've talked about in the short-term rental market, while we're talking, workarounds are spinning through my mind easily, that will be employed, used, some maliciously, some just because it's an easy way around. So who, where, and why, or how is it going to be enforced, is my question, before we spend time worrying about what we're gonna say or do in Dartmouth? Because if we say too much and do nothing, those people in that rental market are laughing at us. If we're gonna get laughed at, not measure it, not enforce it, then let's not even waste our time. So I'm asking sarcastically but professionally, is there a measuring stick that's gonna be employed? Are we gonna know what's going on or is it just us generating a guideline that we hope they follow?
Well, it, it would be, it won't be a problem till it's a problem, like any other rules. It's not a problem till it's a problem. Or you're gonna get Karen next door, or Karen across the street, or Karen behind you calling, and it would be up to the zoning enforcement officer, which is the town building inspector.
So here's a.
Or if there's a big party.
Well, here's a weird question. I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I wanna cast this question now. Is the concern both of you just raised a concern that the planning board can mitigate or resolve because of something we concoct here? Or is it something simply that the police department responds to and takes care of it? Rather it be a full-time resident or someone that's here for seven days?
What, what I think they're talking about in Westport is they're contemplating giving the police more teeth to say, hey, this is a, a, a two-day rental. And maybe they're gonna change the code to seven days, I don't know. But the, at least now there's some, something that the police can refer to to say, hey, you, you're, you're not running your, your property within the, the codes of the town.
But it really isn't up to the police department.
Oh, it isn't?
It, it has not.
Or the zoning officer, you're right.
Zoning officer. The police can then report to the zoning officer that, hey, you know, these, we, we went to a party, there were a hundred people there, all the cars said New York City. You know, and then it's up to the zoning enforcement officer ultimately. Our zoning enforcement office is pretty busy, you know? I almost think that this town is ready for a part-time zoning enforcement officer that specializes only in the enforcement. Because as I drive around this town. Because as I drive around this town, I'm not a stickler, I'm every, a live and let live. But there's a car dealership on, on Dartmouth and Cove. They, you know, a few years back, they came in and they cut every street tree down, and it was part of their parking plan. And now it's closed down, well, this is the perfect time, it's closed down, somebody new comes in for our license, we want those trees back up. We don't know who, if it's the same owner, if it's a different owner. We constantly, John Sousa, uh, you know, would constantly be on the Nissan dealership. You're not supposed to have cars on the grass, that Nissan dealership is constantly having cars on the grass now. We need somebody to go out there and say, sorry, here's your hundred dollar fine, I'll be back next week with a three hundred dollar fine if I see another car there. Because these are the rules, and you mentioned it, they know the rules are in place, their license depends on following the rules. But there's nobody, there's nobody to enforce the rules. I think that a part-time, somebody in the building department that is just going out to. You know, I don't wanna be like New Bedford, oh, your trash is sticking out of the lid a little bit, we're gonna find the homeowner fifty dollars, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about real zoning issues that are not being followed at all, and that are safety issues.
I agree with you a hundred percent, and, uh, one of the meetings was, was last year or the year before, I brought up the, the. Uh, situation where we always take so much time with these site plan reviews. And we have signs put up, do not go over ten miles an hour, blah, 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 we have all the trees, the landscapers. And then you go into, and I'm not naming, and you go into some of these, uh, retail places, the trees have died. Nobody said, goes up to them and says, you gotta replace these trays, because that's not on, nobody. And I had asked Christine, and there's no one that goes around and checks, because, but if we had an assistant. That would be one of the jobs that I would want him to do, because we, you know, especially, especially with, uh. Everybody complaining about the environment and all, when, when trees are down or something happens, then we need to have the owner replace it. We need to make sure they're not parking on the grass, okay, and, uh.
Number of deal, I know that one. John again, John, John was great for that. Number of cars on a lot. You know. You go to a car lot, you're licensed for a hundred and fifty cars, and John would be like, yep, stopped in the other day just to see, you know. Look at a used car on the lot, I did a quick count, there were ten rows of thirty cars, each just three hundred cars.
Right, nobody checks.
They, they're just all jammed in. So.
Go, going back to the, the rental, are we looking as a board to establish a short-term guideline, is that our goal? Or to improve upon?
To, um, I personally, I, I don't think anything's broke, and that's a board. That would be something that if Margaret thinks it is, then we should put it on the priority list and discuss it.
Not right now.
Kevin thinks it is, you know, I'm not picking on you.
No, I know, I know, I'm just, I know what you're saying, I mean, and I say my, please, I don't get offense. But my priority list, I've already mentioned it today, and I'm gonna push.
And I like it, I like it a lot.
Yeah, that's what I wanna work on.
And I think, I think two, two, maybe three items that we should, that we should work on at once.
Next meeting, we gotta talk about it.
Yep, pick three things.
Right.
While, while we're here, based on, uh, what Margaret's brought up, is there, has Toll Brothers come back to the surface, are we dead in the water, where are we?
You're talking about.
Hawthorne.
Yeah, no, they were gonna go before the, um, ZBA, and at the last minute they had to cancel because according, I asked Michelle this. According to one of the bylaws, general bylaws, they couldn't go in there, okay.
Toll Brothers could not go into the ZBA?
No, yeah, no, they, according to zoning, what they were asking for, they couldn't get, so they've gotta, they stepped back.
To revise their approach.
They have to revise it, and see, there was always a problem with that site, because, you, you must know Kevin, because of how it was zoned. See, that site is zoned for recreation. That's what that site is zoned for.
That, that would have to go, I, I honestly believe anything other than a recreation. That has to, I think that's gonna have to go to town meeting.
That's what I think that too.
That's what I, I've been saying that right along, it's gonna, it's beyond our board. Unless somebody came in and said, hey, we wanna put in a mini golf course. Uh, golf carts or, you know, whatever, a little amusement park, whatever it be.
Right, for rec.
Pickleball courts.
I was just gonna say pickleball.
Pickleball courts, you know, a nine-hole golf course and pickleball.
How, how's that gonna go, how is that gonna get to town meeting, what's the path?
Through us, through us, we would have to have the public hearing. It could, it would be like, almost, um, like a, it would be a citizen petition, right?
Right.
So Toll Brothers is dead in the water, their, their final attempt is dead in the water because of the recreational zoning.
I don't know, I think that might be a, I have not asked Michelle, I went.
I've heard conflicting opinions about how that property is actually zoned.
Well, I know it's recreation, what have you heard?
Uh, I, I have heard that a certain portion of it has, was supposed to have been held aside for recreation. But nobody was able to find it.
Well, that's, yeah, nobody was able to find that, that's what I heard too, but.
I don't know if that's the case or not, I, I think at some point we, we need to get some clarity on, on the actual zoning. What we have on the books for that property.
My, my question, my further question is, based on Margaret's interest and all of us agreeing that fifty-five and older needs to be a topic. The next item that we focus on, knowing that we had a builder of quality, a desirable builder that was interested. And knowing the hurdle that exists, if it's gonna go through us, rather than passively waiting for someone to approach us. Can we as a board facilitate this, can we, can we start spinning those wheels?
They were not interested in, in our definition of fifty-five and above.
Toll Brothers wasn't?
Correct, that's not their business.
The current definition.
No, what they built, right, that, that, what they're doing for fifty-five and over, eight, nine hundred thousand dollar homes.
They were, actually, I thought they said million plus.
Oh, maybe a million, I thought it was.
During the meeting, when they were there, I specifically asked him, I said, I'm not holding it to this, I just wanna get an idea. What's the average cost of your, your units? And he said eight to nine hundred thousand.
Yes, that I heard, eight to nine hundred, okay.
Which is now a million, one point one.
Yeah, but I mean, being fair, not being fair to them, because I owe them anything, without, no, if their units are twenty-eight hundred square feet. And they're coming in at three hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot, brand new, and they're, they're moderate to high-level craftsmanship. They might not be off the mark, the question is, could thirty-eight of those homes be sold to fifty-five and over, um, individuals in our town? Like, I wouldn't let the price point deter us, I'm just speaking for myself, I, I know it's not attractive for the majority. But if we ask ourselves, could twenty or twenty-five of those properties sell quickly? To the demographic that we feel we need to serve, and ultimately keep that demographic, that age group in Dartmouth. Is it so bad that we focus, I, I, listen, it's outside of my price range too. But is it so bad that we focus or try and facilitate such, because otherwise, we don't have another option, do we, at the moment?
No, I don't have a problem with that.
We, we can, so. I feel like we're getting a little bit off of the agenda.
Agreed, sorry.
Get in trouble, um, but, you know, this was based under zoning board of appeals we're talking about.
Right, talking about zoning board and how you would get it done.
Zoning.
Right.
Yeah, so it would have to go before town meeting, not the zoning board of appeals. To put anything in there, is, is my, that's my, from what I see.
And it would start with us, correct?
It would have, we would have to do a public hearing on whatever is presented. So, but if we wanted to do a fifty-five plus bylaw and say, we're gonna allow higher density. In more, you know, smaller lots, creating higher density for fifty-five plus neighborhoods. Or sixty-two.
Sixty-two.
Um, then we can't just say Hawthorne Country Club, we have to say.
Spatton.
Residential district.
Right.
A, B, or C, or, or pick a district and say that this bylaw will be for this. I really think that no matter what goes there, right now, they have to come to us, we can't really go to them. Because I don't know how their numbers work. So if somebody came to town and said, okay, we wanna do five hundred thousand dollar, uh, uh, twelve hundred square foot units. We could hear that, and we could, we could put it together, you know, if they say we want twenty-eight hundred, one million dollar units, twenty-eight hundred square foot. Okay, fine, put it together, you know, we were talking about creating a bylaw.
Right.
In town, two separate things.
Yeah.
One that would, just like the, you, you know, we would pick the different districts that we would allow, you know.
Or an overlay.
Or an overlay, yes.
We could do. That's what I would like, yes.
All, I, I totally understand that, and I, I appreciate it, I'm just trying to imply that. If we know that there are restrictions, covenants, legalities behind preventing somebody from coming in and, and making such a pitch in the future. And we know that we have a need, and we know that we have territories, areas, districts that provide. The property description that we're interested in growing, could that be one thing on our list? That we preemptively wanna make a move to make it easier in two years or in seven years when the next builder shows up?
That need and what really, I think, turned Toll Brothers off was the water treatment.
Agreed, they didn't wanna create their.
The water treatment.
I didn't think so at all. I, I, no, no, I did not, they told me, they, they told us.
They would build their own water treatment plant?
Yes, they said.
I thought, I remember him saying, I, I, I thought I remember saying we. They're not crazy about it.
The issue though is that they, that, that property, I, if it doesn't run through it, then it immediately abuts. The aquifer protection overlay district.
I think it abuts.
And you have the stream running, I throw it, we talk about nitrate and creating problems.
But see, the, the other issue was, uh, and I don't think you were on the board, and I don't know about Kevin, but I know he was on the board. Uh, Hathaway Road, we, remember Hathaway Road?
Just before me.
Okay, how many, they were gonna put in a large over fifty-five, and that fell through because of zoning. Okay, so you can't.
And that was not a problem, because that would have been New Bedford, what, septic, um.
Sewer.
Sewer.
And water, I think water too, but, uh, that fell through because of someone making an error in the zone.
Uh, you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Uh, are we going to delay, or are we going to?
Uh, yes, that way we can come back, uh, for the consultant agreement, um, so it's seven oh five.
Motion to postpone the remainder of the meeting until, uh, after the select board meeting.
So I have a motion by Kevin Estes, a second by Margaret Sweet, all in favor, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Nick Cyclebatus?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes.
Six thirty, right on time. You and the planning board, um, so.
Did we apologize to?
No worries.
To the board that we were late, sorry.
I already did when I walked in. Alright, so we're here, and we have a spot on the board to look at. And we also have to talk about town planner. So, you wanna lead off, Mr. Mello?
Okay, so do you wanna start with the town planner or with the spot?
The interview.
Yeah, Kevin, why don't you, everybody knows who you are because they see you in the meetings, but for our audience, they may not know who you are. So please, introduce your board.
Kevin Mello, chairman of the Dartmouth Planning Board.
Margaret Sweet, clerk of the planning board.
Kevin Estes on the planning board.
Nicholas Cyclebatus, planning board.
Alright, alright, so.
So why don't we start with our interviews for the board spot, so we don't have to keep people waiting?
Right, well, we kinda like the audience.
Oh, really?
Alright, so we have a, we have a spot open on the planning board, that was as a result of former planning board member Christopher O'Neil. Moving up to the select board position, which created the vacancy. Um, generally, at this, generally when this occurs with an elected position, the board, along with the select board. Holds an interview for individuals who are interested in the position and to fill. The position does not take the term of the person that they're replacing. It's to the end of, to the next election, uh, they fill an unexpired term. And then at that point, they get, again, to fill, if it's a three-year term, they get it, if it's a two-years term left on it, they get the two years. So they don't, they're not guaranteed a three-year term unless it's the cycle. So, first person we have on, uh, for an interview is, uh, Cara Lawton. Cara, why don't you just come on up? So Cara, just kinda give us a little bit of your experience and basically why? Why do you wanna do this to yourself?
I'm not sure, no. Um, my professional experience is I have an architecture degree from Cornell University. And it was the Art, the School of Architecture, Art and Planning, so my whole professional career has been architecture, art and planning. I've worked for developers in San Francisco and Boston, I've worked for architecture firms in both places and interior designers in both places. And coming back to the South Coast, I moved to Dartmouth, I was born and raised in New Bedford, but moved back to Dartmouth. And I've been here for twenty-three years, I've raised my three children, and I have my own architecture and interior design firm. Why I would like to do this is I feel like at my age, I have a lot of experience and a lot I can share with people. And I think a lot of wisdom of what you can and can't do, and aesthetically and. Plan-wise for the city and the towns, and I've lived in a lot of different cities, which has been very helpful. And I've seen a lot of projects get developed, and I've, from the ground up, and I feel like I can give back, and I can be very useful on this board.
Okay, um, I'm gonna open up to any questions from the planning board, Ms. Lawson. Sorry.
Okay, I have, uh, one question. Hello, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Um, have you ever been on any boards at all in the town of Dartmouth?
No.
None at all?
None at all.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Anyone else? No question.
No question.
Miss, my board, anybody interested?
Let me just ask, um, there is, okay. Cara, thank you for applying, it's nice to see fresh faces wanting to get involved with any board. You bring a, a unique perspective as an architect. And the things that the planning board is looking at, lots of detail of the site. And what's gonna work and what's not gonna work. I just think you bring a different, a different lens.
Yep.
To that, knowing everyone's background, so. Wasn't a question.
Okay.
Just pointing it out.
Ms. Chataba?
Thanks again, Cara, for applying, um, a, a little bit, I guess this is a comment, and maybe it's made for the whole board as well. Um, I appreciate the fact that most of the work you do is down and dirty detail, uh, working one-on-one with, with residents on their projects. But I also think that, uh, is that I do think in our perspective, it's the same thing, at some point in time, you have to pull yourself away. From the day-to-day work of what a planner does or the, or planning board does, and look at the big, big picture, be it the master plan. Uh, be it what people want, what the residents want, coordinating other efforts of the big picture, uh, whether it be clean water. Water sewer or whatever.
Yes.
I, and I think that, uh, from my point of view, going forward, uh, I think it's a critical aspect of what planning does, and we need to do. And I'm hoping that as we go forward, uh, that when, with a new planning director, that we can also coordinate our efforts to make sure that the big picture is always being addressed. It's hard, cause you're working on these individual projects, week in and week out, it takes a lot of time, but it's hard. And I really appreciate it, it's hard for us, but I think it's critical to our residents, we owe that to them to look at the big picture and, and pull ourselves away.
So my question is, how, how good of you are a fast learner, because from experience? And listening to former, former planning board members, it takes them a while to get, to get into the rolling of everything. Generally, some people say it takes a year, some say it takes two, some say it takes a term, which is five years. So the willing, so the question that I have with you, are you willing to commit to roll up your sleeves and get heavily involved? Because this isn't just, uh, this just isn't a, this is a very technical position. And the effect on it, especially in this town, is, it's probably, it's probably one of the more critical positions in this town. That doesn't get a lot of play out there, people don't know what they do, for the most part. They see the results, they see it at town meeting when something's being proposed. Probably nine times out of ten, they have a marginal understanding as to what they're. Probably nine times out of ten, they have a marginal understanding as to what they're trying to do. So, my question is, are you ready to get down and dirty?
Yep. My kids are grown and I have two out of the house, one still is in college and I have more time. And I love a challenge, so.
Okay, 'cause your, your, your biggest challenge besides getting to know what's going on is getting to know what's happening that they're currently doing and then coming down the pike. And then wanting to know at some point in time, come January, February, if you wanna continue. That's the big thing. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm looking for somebody to sit on that board that's going to be there. Bless you, who's gonna be there for a while. So, I'm, I appreciate that, yeah.
I'm ready to take it on.
Yeah, I, I'd like to just share something with you, um, as a precursor to who we are and thank you for applying and thank you for your effort and your interest. I wanna say that your resume and what you shared with us is profoundly, uh, it's just a great achievement and it's overwhelming and impressive. And you've been here long enough. I've, more or less was born and raised here and I use the word special in my campaign. I just wanna share with you that as technical as you are in all of your achievements, um, are there's a heartbeat behind Dartmouth that people don't see when they drive down Sloker Road or up and down Route Six and who we are and the considerations we make. Not for an applicant, not for a project, but for the town in its whole. And I just wanna share with you preemptively here that aside from the fact that we are a board and there are guidelines and there's technical reviews and so on, there's a very much family-like feel between us four and how we respect, see and hear the town. And I'm only sharing that with you because that's what you're gonna feel when you sit with us and become a group of five. Dartmouth is special and we keep that in mind throughout all of our meetings. Thank you.
Don't let his baritone voice scare you. He is a decent guy.
No, and my father was a fifth grade school teacher at Gidley School for thirty years. So I, I've been around, Walter Schomack. So I've been around Dartmouth my whole life, so, yeah.
A big ring.
Uh-huh.
In the days when you could do that.
Yes, sir, I thought he would throw it at your head. Yes.
No, my husband.
Have any other questions or comments?
Just a comment, Sean, so perseverance doesn't seem to be a problem. This letter says April twenty-second, so thanks for sticking it out, Cara.
Exactly.
Um, so, so the, the design work, public buildings, um, can you tell us, um, about any specific projects that were really intriguing to you? Uh, and the impact that you had on them individually?
Probably the, you mean, it doesn't matter what it is.
No, no.
The development projects that I worked on in San Francisco were fascinating. I was part of the farmer's market that was originally designed down on Fisherman's Wharf. And they really wanted to preserve a natural area that they could bring in the local farmers. Working for those developers was incredible, 'cause they had the right set of morals that was my guiding factor from day one. It was incredible to watch what they did. So we did the farmer's market and then we worked on the Presidio, which was government-owned and we had a lease to do math and science education in those buildings. So just watching, having done it right and in such a big city and the factors that go into developing were really, really fascinating to me. So I feel like I was able to be a part of something that's still standing.
Terrific.
And you taught, uh, architecture and design?
I do, yes. I did and I, I still do at RISD. I feel like I have a lot of knowledge and experience of running my own business and design, so I teach when I can. A class each semester at RISD and I plan to do more of that in the future.
Great, thank you.
So I was a former planning, uh, board member.
How long, fifty years ago?
Couple hundred years ago.
Um. Who's counting?
Not, not that I'm counting. It's a, it's, it was a really interesting time for me. Uh, it was one of my second board that I was on, um, in my younger days and, uh, uh, you bring an awful lot to this board, um, but you're gonna learn an awful lot from this board. Uh, so, uh, I wish you all the luck.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I love learning. I'm a lifetime learner, so.
Kevin?
So, one of the hardest concepts that I had, um, when I got on the board eleven years ago when Stanley got to the big, the grown-up table, um, was balancing personal, private rights of landowners with what I liked of open space, uh, recreational space. And I noticed that you do say that you're, you like to preserve open space. How will you balance landowner rights while preserving open space?
Well, I think there, there has to be a balance. I am a big proponent of DNRT and all that they've preserved and I've worked with the Buzzards Bay Coalition for water cleanliness and I know what's behind the scenes and I know how important it is for the environment to keep green space and clean water and I'm a big thinker and a forward thinker. And I want this place to stand the test of time for my children who will have a future here.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright, next up we have Helio Rosa. Mr. Rosa? Just to introduce yourself and your experience and basically why?
Uh, Helio Rosa, um, currently the vice president of Facilities and Real Estate for the YMCA of Greater Boston. Which might sound a little intimidating, but I am a twenty-five-plus-year resident of, um, of Dartmouth. Uh, my formal education and training is also in architecture. Uh, for thirteen-plus years, worked at an architecture firm, uh, all basis of design. Primarily, primarily my focus was in project management and planning. I worked my way up through, um, through management and the tail end of my career there, I was in quality assurance, responsible for all code evaluations, quality control, documents and projects, uh, where, uh, I was then recruited by South Coast Health to lead their design and construction department. Uh, beginning of my tenure there was actually the medical space planning department, so planning was immediately ingrained into the requirements of, of the position. Morphed into something a lot more deeper because we ran all of the design projects for the system, all of the construction for the system and ultimately I got into the property management division. In that role, I was the de facto interior designer, sorry. In-house designer for the system. Uh, we also ran our own, um, construction projects. We, um, all the planning, capital planning, strategic planning from a capital standpoint, anything that you have seen around our communities through the greater New Bedford and Fall River areas were, um, and for those eleven years were under my watch. Uh, during my, let me back up, during my tenure, during my architectural career, our sister company was also, um, in construction management. So, uh, we had, um, instances where we would take off our designer's hat and put our construction hat on. So it gave me a, um, a well-rounded breadth of experience in design, in construction, before I eventually moved on to the owner's role. Since twenty-twenty, I've led, um, in similar roles, um, all of the design and real estate work for the YMCA of Greater Boston. Uh, we have thirteen locations throughout the, um, metropolitan Boston area and into the suburbs. There I run all of their real estate in addition to the design and construction work itself. So in all of these roles, I've had the ability to gain, um, all these different experiences, but certainly I've had to lead in working with, uh, local authorities, whether it's through planning departments, uh, conservation commissions. Uh, in addition to, um, uh, inspectional services and building departments. Uh, most of my work prior to the Y was in healthcare, um, heavily regulated, Department of Public Health. So working with local authorities, with state agencies, with, um, local town and city agencies has come hand-in-hand with the work that I've, uh, have done. More recently even with, uh, the YMCA, we've had to, because of the, the projects that we've developed, we're working with DCR. Uh, we've had to work with, uh, local planning boards and getting A and Rs and, and, and other projects move forward. So collectively, this morphs into the Y. Uh, when I saw the opening with the planning board, given my experience, given my background, um, there was some synergy that, hey, maybe I could be of help and of service to the town, um, given, uh, my experience. So, uh, looking forward to the opportunity to, if, if it's appropriate, to working with a planning board and using all this locked-up knowledge and, uh, and experience to, um, further the goals of, of Dartmouth.
Thank you for that. Uh, Kevin?
So, in, in the past, we've always asked the same questions of all the candidates, so I wanna remind everybody. Uh, so in doing so, uh, how would you balance landowner rights with open space?
Um, like everything else, there's likely to be a middle ground or a common ground to be reached. Um, landowners' rights, I think, are, um, primary. Um, the autonomy is, is, is crucial. But working within the greater goal of the town is also an important, and part of the role, and even drawing on my experience working in healthcare, um, finding common ground was really, um, paramount and essential to the successes that we had, working particularly at South Coast. And I'm gonna say this with every ounce of respect that it, that it do, working with physicians and finding common ground with physicians isn't always an easy task. They have their role, they have their importance, they have their priorities. Um, and, and that's important, and that's important. And, you know, we took great pride in, in building consensus to getting a natural result and natural solutions for whatever the problem and task at hand. So that approach, um, I think is just as essential and beneficial in when it comes to, um, to planning.
Thank you.
Okay, I will ask the same question. How many, uh, if, have you ever been on any boards in this town?
Yes. Uh, earlier this year, I was appointed to the Recreation and Center Building Committee.
Uh, so you've only been on there since January, February? Okay. Uh, you're a town meeting member too?
I am a town meeting member.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, board?
Well, I made a statement, I guess it's, uh, you've heard it, so I, I, and I'll, I'll leave it at that. I didn't answer a question, so I'll keep it at that, but I the more I listen to myself talk, the more important I, I felt it is, so I um, it's not the last time I'm gonna say it. Thank you.
Stanley?
Uh, just, uh, real quick, uh, former member of planning board, um, it's a big job. Um, people, uh, in a lot of cases, really don't understand what we did, what we did or what they do, um, but it's a big job. It's a big responsibility. Everybody pulling at everyone, um, is, uh, in, in the best interest of, of the town. And I just hope whoever the appointee is, uh, consider, understands that, uh, their responsibility is to the best interest of our town.
Mr. O'Neil?
Um, Helio, thank you for, um, uh, for coming forward, number one. Um, the you have time for it. Seems like you're pretty busy.
Yes.
Yeah, you're in town a lot. Do you, you work remotely or are you back and forth to Boston or?
I'm hybrid from Boston to, um, to remote.
Yeah. Okay. I'm good.
Ms. Brooks? Well, I, I posed the same question and basically you have to be a quick learner. Are you? And because it is technical, most of it, a lot of it is technical. But as Nick had said, it's something that you have to be cognizant and aware of your surroundings. Um, I think part of, one of the, one of the biggest weirdest things that ever happened was the proposed fast food restaurant on the corner of Tucker Road and Route Six. Where it sounded like a great idea for people who like that restaurant, but the location was an absolute disaster. And so you're gonna have something like that. You're gonna have somebody coming in. But I think, I think not so much, not so much the developer that creates the most concerns. It's the single homeowner that wants to do something and that's the one that really, you wanna try to work and help. And so, you know, are you ready to, to get down and dirty on something like that? Because it could be your neighbor. You never know. So, you know.
To answer, yes. And as far as the quick learning, I think it's, um, it's a question of adaptability. Um, from my experience, um, as you can see from my own experience and resume, I've, I've been in architecture, I've been in construction, I've been the owner. I've gone from healthcare to now running the large, one of the largest nonprofits, um, in Boston. Uh, the nimbleness that's required has been required of me.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Alright, so now we have a decision to make here and I can tell you this right now. You know, this is never easy because generally when we have this, you know, we go feast of famine. And this is just, we have two really qualified candidates for this position and it's, you know.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Um, I don't know how it came about with the zoning board, but they are the only board that has seats aboard and an alternate. And I'm looking at two outstanding candidates and I'm gonna follow that up with knowing that there are times when members of the planning board must recuse themselves from a discussion because in their other life, they may be the neighbor of or they may be the relative of, or they may represent someone. I'm wondering if, and again, I don't know how that came upon us from the zoning board. But this seems like a board that having a member in the batter's box would be helpful.
Okay, this, and this is, this, you just, you get, you get my juices flowing because it has happened in the past.
Oh.
If I remember correctly, and I think Mr. Gagnon can probably help me. Kathleen Del Soto, who served on the planning board for a number, a number of years, became a, um, Anthony? Became a, uh, alternate member?
Alternate.
At that point, so there is a precedent in doing that.
Well, in current, so the past experience in the last eleven years has been to have the most recent senior-most board member sit as our alternate. For example, uh, two weeks ago, we were short, we were down. So our alternate currently is Laurie Ann Miller. That's who our current, law, that we, we, after April, every April, she is appointed now until, by this board until next April. Next April, after the board is reconfigured, if there's any changes, the new members voted. At our first meeting, we vote to have somebody sit as our alternate. And she is there in the cases that Ms. Brooks said. Should somebody not be available due to illness, due to vacation, and we have a public here and we want that full. And that's why it came to be that way. It's not an alternate member, per se. And there, there are rules in place that if they didn't see the first meeting, they have to witness, they have to watch the first meeting in sign that they're aware of the current.
Right, so they can't come into the middle of the conversation.
Correct. And, and it's always been a person with a large amount of experience that sits in that space. Um, it's not like the zoning board of appeals. I was the alternate for the zoning board of appeals as a newbie.
Right.
And it gave me great, a great way to get started, you know, just test the waters and um, with the planning board, it's a little bit different.
My apologies for not knowing.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming Mr. Attorney Savastano wants to weigh in because he got up and he's standing.
Our, our bylaws, Article forty-six, Section thirty-seven dash forty-six point one B provides as provided Massachusetts General Law Forty-A, Section Nine, the planning board, when acting as a special permit granting authority, so there is some limitations here, may appoint an alternate to serve in such time that the elected member of the board is unable to serve. And then it goes on to say that the appointment is made by four of the five elected members of the planning board. Um, the planning board may make such an appointment anytime, provided that, that appointment expires after the first regular meeting which takes place after the next general town election. But it's only for special permit granting authorities, not for everything.
Right, not every meeting. Okay.
Correct.
Alright, so, so the question is, what do we do? Does anybody have any suggestions or just comments?
Um, no, I, I mean, we have two great candidates and, uh, generally in the past, what we have done is is, uh, I ask for a nomination from the board and then a second, and then the two boards would vote together on that. So, do I have a nomination?
Can I ask a question?
Before we get to the nomination? What definition charter, et cetera, defines the fact that our board has to be limited? Is, is there, is there a way to expand our board? And I speak before you in a way that's very, very difficult, but I wanna say it because it's present. There are two candidates here that bring a profound amount of experience and benefit to the board, to the town, for zero dollars. And they far exceed my capability in that subject matter, but by no means do I think, or can I reassure you-
But by no means do I think, or can I reassure you, that they exceed my consideration for the people of Dartmouth or the town of Dartmouth. So I'm not excluding myself or removing myself. But where and how is the board limited?
It's the town charter.
And/or is this a situation where we can expand upon this?
My, my quick read on the whole thing, because it's an elected position, it has to be a charter change. So right now, the charter has five members of the Planning Board being elected in, in different terms of five years.
Understood.
So to do, to make any kind of change like that, we definitely have to go, number one, to a charter committee, charter committee, then town meeting, and from town meeting to the public, and then after the public vote, at the annual election, it has to go, it waits another year.
Understood.
For it to be implemented.
Town charter review is 10 years from now?
Well, we certainly could take up, we could take up an issue for the October town meeting.
Okay.
If we felt that there was something that needed, so this is the next bite of the apple. Right. Only because we haven't had the April 2025 election. Once we have the April 2025 election and we have proposed all the charter changes to the board, to the townspeople, then our role as charter members is, or charter review is done.
Okay.
And then in 2023, they could take it out. So we actually don't have 10 years to wait.
Unless, unless the select board calls for an elected charter commission, which can happen anytime. That doesn't, that does not necessarily have to be on a five or 10-year cycle. That can be done anytime. Interim charter changes in the past upon the recommendation of the select board, just to let you know, we don't have to wait 10 years. You can, you can propose it to town meeting anytime.
But something significant like this is, it goes before the, you know, it has to go before the voters.
There's no emergency.
Right.
Okay.
Well, if I may speak, I was impressed with both of the applications. They're both well-educated, have experience. So I studied it, and I must have read everything three times, honestly. And I'm very impressed with Mr. Rosa because of his commercial background and what he's done all the way around as construction, owning businesses. So I would make a nomination, a motion to pick Mr. Rosa.
Do I have a second?
Can I speak freely for a moment?
You always do.
In respect to, in respect to her motion, in all fairness to both candidates, the only thing that separates them in my mind and my ability to call upon one of them over the other is that I know Mr. Rosa's character. I've interacted with Mr. Rosa numerous times. And for me, there's a little bit more transparency into who he is as a person, not to deter from the other candidate, but it's the, I'm making a distinct point that it's the only separation that allows me to support Margaret's motion. It has nothing to do with their credentials. They're both highly capable and qualified. So you have a second, but I wanted to clarify my second.
Transparency.
Yes.
All right, so there's a motion made by.
Margaret.
Mrs. Sweet, sorry.
It's okay.
Seconded by Mr. Psychopatis.
Nice job.
So that's from all the years eating at the Olympia. On the motion, is there any other questions on the motion by the planning board? Any questions from the select board? Okay.
Comment?
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Two outstanding candidates, very difficult. And I think that the only thing that separates me is that Mr. Rosa's come to us before. He's been appointed, he's on a committee, and Ms. Lawton is not. She's local, and she works local. And I think that give her the opportunity to be on the committee would be a good idea. That's the only reason, because I'd be thrilled, I'd love to have both people on the board, but that's not possible. So in the interest of spreading the wealth, that's my suggestion.
Okay. Anybody else?
My thinking was along the same lines as Mr. Tattlebaum. Helio is on our, I have to think about what it's called, Recreation Building Committee. And Kira would be a new face drag, drawing in. And, and certainly, I think both of them would be great additions, and that's why I initially mentioned about the alternative, because I'd love to see them both have an impact to the planning.
There is an alternative, so. Myself, this is a wealth of, again, I've been in this position way too many times where we have two candidates, three candidates, four candidates that are just absolutely qualified for this position and just willing to do it. However, I will acquiesce to the Planning Board themselves and support what, what they decide what is best for them. And, and I'm a firm believer, maybe at some point in time, Mr. Rosa will find that his duties on the Recreation Commission, Recreation Building Committee might be too much to handle, and that he resigns, and then that position opens up for somebody who's equally qualified to be on that position, to be on that board also. Even midstream would be probably advantageous, so.
I don't know if it was an oversight, but there is no member of the planning board on that board that I'm aware of.
There is, an old member.
Is there a member on that Recreation?
I don't think so.
No, there isn't.
So I don't know if that was an oversight, because that almost seems like it goes hand in hand, you know, that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that was more of a setup a citizen committee versus having it.
Okay.
All right, so on the motion, Kevin, you can call for a vote for your board.
Okay, roll call vote. Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Essies?
No.
Nick Psychopatis?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Okay. All right, select board, roll call. Mr. O'Neil?
One comment? I think we have an opportunity to keep both. If Kira were, were appointed to the, the Planning Board and Helio were to stay on the Recreation until we get into April and let him hash it out, you know? But so I would be, I would be a no on the current motion.
Clarify the vote, please.
It was three to two. It's three one, Planning Board.
And we are voting?
For us, yeah.
And we're just on our own independent vote?
Yes, our own independent vote. So Mr. O'Neil is a no. Ms. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
No.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor, yes. So we got five, four? Five, four. Mr. Rosa is appointed to the Planning Board for the term till the next election, so.
Thank you.
Personally, I'd like to thank Mr. Rosa and Ms. Lawton for coming up, stepping up and doing the position. It's not an easy thing not to be selected, that's for sure. But, you know, I have a feeling that we're not going to not see you anymore. We will see you in the future, so. Okay, thank you very much. All right, so moving on, we have some other.
Yes.
Businesses to discuss. We have a planning director that has.
First, we have Planning Department Operations.
Yeah, Rosa, yep. Mr. Rosa, you'll be getting a letter from our, Chris, you're going to send a letter to Mr. Rosa?
I will.
Okay, and at that point in time, after that, see the town clerk to be sworn in, and then you can start what you need to do with the, with the planning board. So we have a planning director that is resigning for the second time. And so what is on the planning board's docket to?
Congratulations.
What's on the planning board's suggestion as to how we're going to move forward until the position is filled?
So we, I've met with Ross, and Ross is our assistant planner, and he's handling the day-to-day operations. We do need some professional help. He's not ready to step up. I wish he was, because I love to promote from within. He's just not ready for it at this time. So we do need, I've been using the word interim contractor, whatever you prefer.
We've, we've been using that term for a little bit, you know, we understand.
Somebody, Chris Vitale and I met, and we can offer 11 hours a week so that Ross will have somebody to go to. We will have somebody to go to. The board discussed it earlier, you know, if there's a public hearing, we feel that the consultant would have to be present on our Zoom public. If there's no public hearing, we feel that Ross would be sufficient to be handling the meetings, give him a little bit more responsibility. So we feel that we're at that point. Was asked, we need to appoint somebody. And we were, the board, quite frankly, was a little bit upset with the exit and how the exit was handled. I, as the, as the chairman of the planning board, was the second person to find out that she was leaving. Leave the personal effects out of it, you know? Yes, I'm hurt, I'm over it. I didn't like that. My board didn't like that. I was asked not to tell my board, personally asked not to tell my board, so I didn't, out of respect. I said, okay, you can tell them yourself. My board found out via gossip, which did not look good for me. Caused friction. So we are asking that instead of following past practice where the immediate planner becomes our consultant, that we go back to our prior planner, who was more than willing to do it, and have John Hanson come back and be our consultant. We will have to bring him up to speed. And this would be only until we found a new planner. He has many years of experience. He has actually recently moved on to be the assistant town administrator and found his own replacement for the town. So he has some connections. He will really be valuable and hopefully helping us fill this position, because as many of you remember, the last time, the reason we brought the town planner back was after eight months of her absence. We still, in multiple nationwide searches, we had no, no one to fill the spot. So I think between his experience with Dartmouth, his recent experience filling the position for a planner, he would be very beneficial to us.
To next, all four, you agree?
We have not, we have not discussed it openly. I've constantly been saying, we need to, a planner, you know? I wanted, I would have loved to ask another planner that was in the past, but I'm certain that they wouldn't have come back.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah.
So, you know.
John Hanson up currently?
Swansea.
Oh, he's in Swansea.
So we have never discussed, we have just said examples, names, you know? It could be this person, it could be that person.
I can tell you this, I can tell you this right now. That is your board's decision. And if you're looking for support from us, I can't speak for all five of us, I can only speak for myself. I think going with John Hanson is a great decision. I'm fully aware of his past work and his work ethic, and I think it's a good choice as to somebody to assist this town while we're looking for a new planner. And you will have my support in making that decision. Other members?
I'm sure the select board, the entire board will be behind me, really.
Thank you.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
This fellow, John Hanson's been appointed the new assistant town administrator?
He is the assistant administrator in Swansea, yes.
He was, he was the town planner?
He was a town planner. He moved back to his, he now works, Swansea is only five minutes from his home. So when he left us, it was to be closer to home.
But he's now, and I'm not, I agree that it's not our decision, but you're asking an assistant town administrator newly appointed to come to your meetings every?
Well, the planning board still, according to the government, the governor's rules, meets remotely.
Okay, but he's got to do a lot of preparation, a lot of work.
On the major, on the major.
To be able to assist you broadly.
So on the major things, because we do have a full-time office staff. It probably would be very different if we did not have a full-time office staff.
We have somebody that's there now.
I understand.
So our assistant.
This will, we need to, we need to minimize, just like you would minimize how much you send to Attorney Savastano. You want to minimize what we send.
We appointed a co-town administrator with the, with the concern that how to divide the responsibilities, and I think our two fellows have done a fantastic job of that. And everybody knows what the responsibilities are. Obviously, in this particular case between Ross and Hanson, and he was the chair, he's going to have to make sure who's responsible, what and when. And if they're willing to do that, it'll work out great. If not, everybody won't know what their job is and who's responsible.
I think the reason for the interim town planner is for the major projects that require.
It is for major projects.
Major projects.
Versus policy which Ross could handle, because the policy comes from you guys, adds to the direction.
Chris, please correct me if I'm wrong, we have a budget of 11 hours for three months. If we only use five hours one week, do the extras carry forward?
Yeah, so I believe how we were going to word it is up to 11. And I would say that obviously, if we can conserve hours, if we do have an overrun in terms of that recruitment timeline, which we'll be talking about next, that'll help us to make sure that we can continue those services.
And I've already drafted the agreement, obviously, for you to look at, based on our conversations, Kevin and mine, with Chris. And it doesn't cap it in a number of weeks, it caps it in dollars. The idea is to keep it under the $10,000 procurement. So it will carry until such time as you've expended $10,000.
Hopefully, we get a good.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Chires on that.
Just to clarify, John's position in Swansea is not the similar to our assistant town administrator. It's more akin to Deborah Molina Wender's job as economic development. So it's focused on that, even though the title is Assistant Town Administrator.
I'd like to get Mr. O'Neil's opinion if he's willing to give it.
Yeah. First of all, proactive, forward-thinking. I, you know, it's, it's great that the, the boards come together with, with a suggestion. Normally, it's, you come with a problem with no suggestions, and, and that makes the job very, very difficult for us. But the fact that you found someone that has the experience to do this on a part-time basis and to help Ross with some of the bigger projects is great. I think Ross is doing a terrific job, by the way, of holding the department together and helping with the technical review meetings, which I think are invaluable, and we, we need to continue to, to get through those with everybody, because it really does give us a great background for some of the bigger projects, and now John would be involved in those for the bigger ones. So I think that's, I think it's a great option, myself.
Terrific. Thank you.
Ms. Brooks, anything?
I'm happy they found.
I got this input from, from the former town planner that, I guess I can say this, I'll say it anyway. A day or two after Mr. McGinnis gave his notice, she got a call from a headhunter. Not so much that she was the greatest town planner in the world, but because this, headhunters know that when the top dog leaves, you want to go around and find out people who are disgruntled or may want to walk away, and that's what they did. And my, and, and, and she, she was offered something that, you know, she didn't want to refuse, and how she left and whatever, that's a different story. I think we also need to be very aware of that process for us. For the new planning director. For all positions.
Let's put it this way, I can headhunt us, ambulance chases, so.
But they hit home hard, and she was gone. But anyway.
Right, right. But then it trickles down from there. So, and actually, the Technical Reviewers meeting just came up. I'd like your blessing as a board to be able to have at least one representative of this board sit in with Ross Cuddy. I know it's been controversial in the past that board members go to those, but I think with your blessings, that should.
I don't see any reason why not. I mean, I don't, does anybody else?
What's the question?
Could we attend the technical review meetings in lieu of Christine? I know Chris sat in on those.
I think I was the one that asked too many questions.
You, no.
As if for the planning board member actually being involved in those technical review meetings.
That's the end of that, right?
Yeah, that was the end of that. But I, I will reiterate what Kevin's saying. It's a very important process, especially for the larger projects in town. And it doesn't make any sense, it didn't then and it still doesn't, that a member of the planning board is not involved in those meetings.
I think, Kevin.
And we thought what we could do was, every time there's a different technical review, we take turns doing it, okay?
Great idea.
And that way, when we go to the meetings, if something one of us doesn't understand, that person that was there perhaps could explain that. And that's our reason.
And I think that gets, that gets the board more involved into the minutia. You know, which sometimes.
Second set of ears, second set of eyes.
Right.
You know, maybe something gets lost in the translation.
I think it's a fantastic idea.
Back up for Ross.
Literally, I think it really is.
Good.
You know?
So I think the general consensus you have right now from, from the board
is that, you know, go ahead and work out to try to get John, you know, on board, which now kind of leads us into the next step is.
Help can we provide in that process, Mr. Chairman?
Blessings right now.
Yeah.
They've already, they've already, between Kevin, Chris and Anthony, they're going to be working on the details of the agreement that he's going to work under.
Go back, when we're done here, we're going to go back to our meeting, reopen, reconvene, take a vote and close our meeting up. Then we'll have the official vote. We also need to take a vote, I believe that I can sign the contract versus the whole board each having to come in to sign. So if they're comfortable with that, I will receive that vote. If not, all four of us will come in.
Yeah, we just need, yeah, we just need a vote from the board to authorize you to sign on your behalf. Just like sometimes we have, you know, we authorize the town administrator to sign on our behalf on certain contracts.
Correct.
Which kind of leads us to the next step, is now advertising for the position.
Please do.
Yes. And so I, with our HR director, she did sit down in preparation for this meeting and pull, you know, the job description. She took a look through it, just made sure that it was current, up to date. In the packet, there is the job description, a draft advertisement, and a timeline, which I'll go over right now. So I know we were just talking about the 11 hours per week. And what that equates to is about three months, you know, give or take, depending on the number of hours. So with that, you know, that's the timeline we're operating in. And obviously, we don't want it to be eight months. We want to be very aggressive coming out of the gate. So with that, the way we've proposed this is, you know, week one, which I would consider here, right now, is identifying people we'd want to sit on the interview panel for the position, that screening committee. Week two, meeting with that panel to establish the process for reviewing the job descriptions and confirming the timeline for the search. You know, beginning next week, we'd like to post the position. We'd like to set the deadline as of week five. So that would leave a few weeks for people to apply. Week six, we're proposing doing initial screening of applications through HR with the idea that we can identify applicants who meet the minimum qualifications for what's posted. So that that would be available, I guess, to help sort through the applications a little bit quicker. Week seven, distribute application summaries of the candidates. And the board can, or the screening committee can set recommendations for who they want to interview. That would take place over a two-week period. Week nine, schedule the interviews. Week 10, conduct interviews and identify the top three candidates for the final rounds. Reference checks would occur before the final rounds, you know, assuming there's no issues. And then interviews, or the final interviews and identifying the top candidate would take place in week 12. Shortly after that, there'd be a recommendation for appointment and then we'd begin contract negotiations from there. So all in all, that is 13 weeks for the appointment. The one thing that is conditional is, you know, if it is someone who is currently in a role, what their notice period will be. So that would probably be another three weeks or so, is what we'd estimate. You know, with that, there are a couple of questions that are open-ended and really up for discussion tonight. Because again, to stick to that timeline, we're going to need some answers so that we can just move. So one of the things is, who does the board want to have on that panel? I know last time it was made up of representative from the board, representative of the planning board, and I believe there was other members there. So, you know, whether it's HR who wants to be in on that process, certainly. Perhaps another department head, member of the planning department currently in the role, just for consideration. The next item for consideration is whether or not the committee, the screening committee wants to just do a secondary review of the job description ad before it gets posted by HR. You know, as part of this timeline, we are proposing doing an initial screen for minimum qualifications. That's something we can or can't do. You know, I think the idea would be that we present all the applications to the screening committee, but we'd more or less have it as a summary of, here's the qualifications, you know, in case it was something where you wanted to stick to what the ad says, more or less. The last thing is that final interview. You know, if that will be in a joint meeting setting, and I believe it was last time, if history recalls. But I just wanted to confirm that. So I guess that's the quick summary of the timeline, how we see it. And this is obviously subject to, you know, any adjustments made by the boards.
Okay, I, I think what I'd like to do is, is to forward the job description to the planning board so they can review. And then the sooner you guys get that back, the sooner that we can take care of it.
Okay.
As far as the screening committee goes, a member of the planning board, member of the select board, HR.
Yep.
I think three, a three-person board should be fine. So what I'm going to do right now is ask my board members if anyone is interested. But I have a feeling, I think.
No pressure.
Somebody would be interesting, I'm, okay. We need to appoint Mr. O'Neill on that, on that committee. As his first foray into, as a select person into a screening committee.
Mr. McDonald, I'm also going to ask that when complete, when the job description is complete, I'd like it to be written in the format that we did the town administrator's contract.
Yep. You'll see that.
As we go forward.
Basically, there's a heading.
The format would be consistent.
Heading as to what, the branch salary, if it's negotiable type of thing, so. And if it's union, non-union, that's all, this is, it's just little heading things.
That's right.
That's right.
Visual.
Comments?
Mr. Talabon?
Firstly, if we're going to review the job description, is that going to add another week to this process?
No, I don't think so. I think the job description, then we'll forward the job description to the, to the board, they can review it and Mr. Mello can get back to Mr. Vitale.
We'll do everything we can to compact the process, not spread it out.
We will.
If you're not careful, three weeks is going to go by and we're behind the ball. Okay, my second, on week six, is to screen the applications. My concern is that you get all the applications and you have maybe one, you're kind of, and you're throwing it. What do we do at that point in time, rather than, okay, let's just do, pick the one and the other two? We need to have a plan upfront to say, what are we going to do if the, if the well is too dry and the quality's not there? What are we going to do about it?
I think we have to go back out. Readvertise. We, we don't want a dry well.
And we leave it up to that committee and your board to say, this is not working, we got to go back and, and to add another whatever, because we can't, we cannot say, if we don't, the wells are dry, that we're going to just do what we can.
I mean, it wouldn't be the first time a screening committee just said, you know, and let's go out again. It's happened before.
But that should be part of the plan.
As we did with the building inspectors.
Right, also, right now, we're looking at, if you count up those weeks and look when we're estimating a timeframe to start, this person isn't starting until mid-November, going week by week here. So to say that we need to readvertise and we're going to have to add now two more weeks to this is not going to.
No, I'm saying at week.
End the process ridiculously long.
At week six, we have a decision to make. What are we going to do? And it may be that not only have to readvertise, and maybe we have to pay more for the, I don't know what it's going to be.
Not only, this is what happened last time. Not only do they have that decision, we have that decision too.
I understand that.
But we can't drag our feet nonsensically.
Week six.
There's going to be concurrent searches here.
On week six, when it's HR and TA screening the applications, should it also be this panel to interview, looking at those applications as well?
Well, I mean, I would think, I think when you get, when you get your initial, when you get your initial applications, you can readily tell who you want to interview.
It was six and seven.
Basically, you're just basically saying, okay, say you have.
Did they meet the criteria or not?
Right, say you have 12. Okay, do they meet what they want? Okay, these six do, these six don't. Okay, so you're at the six, now you're looking at, now you're looking for the interview of the six.
But that's, that's a good scenario.
Optimistic.
Of course, it's a good scenario.
What if you have maybe one?
Could be three.
Then you go back out.
Six and seven, whatever it takes.
The difficult part will be if we have one shining star and nobody to interview them against. That is the.
Bring in Stanley, can you do him? That's the position you really want.
Depends on how bright that bulb is.
It doesn't happen. It might not happen.
It might not happen.
You have to be prepared for that.
Chris?
I think this time around, you know, the fact you have HR involved in this process.
Right.
And so, you know, we're going to be tracking these applications as they come in, right? So hopefully, it's not, we're waiting till week six to say, hey, we got to, you know,
Right.
take a different approach here.
Okay.
You know, I think we're going to be looking at this continuously. And if it looks like we, again, have a good amount and we're getting a good number of applications from multiple sources, then we can feel confident in moving forward. You know, the other thing too is, we can set an application deadline. But again, even that deadline is fluid. It could be first review of applications starts on this date. So there's certainly things that as a screening committee, you can go and you can give that feedback to HR and then, you know, we can make adjustments as necessary. I think the big thing here is if we're adding weeks or, you know, it just, on the backside of it, we want to make sure, again, talking about the support, you know, that we have those services in place while we go through this whole process.
Next question over there?
Quick question regarding the interim planner. Are we requesting commitment from the interim planner in exchange for what we're offering him? Are we going to have a contract that's going to expire December 31st? Or are we defining that?
My understanding, the contract has a, has a finite amount.
Right.
$10,000.
$10,000.
And will we be discussing that in the next?
Will we be able to discuss however the duration of time that that $10,000 may include or not? In other words, that might decrease the pressure on the hiring process a little bit. If it's $10,000 and/or 12 calendar months.
It's a maximum of 11 hours per week.
Hang on.
For the $10,000 is you can do that using better business practices without going to the next step in the procurement, which is anything above $10,000, less than $50,000, you have to get three quotes. So we're trying to keep it under the procurement amount of $10,000.
Understood.
So could we do a second procurement?
Further, we can talk about how we go from there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I think you have your marching orders.
Thank you.
You know what you're going to do, so we look forward to seeing what's happening.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
HR will be in touch.
Enjoy your meeting.
It is 8:36. We will ask for a motion in a second to reconvene the Dartmouth planning board meeting of July 22nd, 2024.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Kevin Estes, seconded by Margaret Sweet, all in favor, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. So that went well.
Yeah.
I like the timeline.
I think it's a little auspicious.
Me too.
You know, half is, glass is half-full. Let's go ahead with that.
Well, I mean, it, it's all dependent upon what kind of results you get.
Out of our control.
Right.
It's out of our control, but I will tell you that they seem to be much more on top of it than they were at this point, the last time we had this, which I know was before your time. But it was a nightmare the last time. And it was not, it was not, I think it was not handled as well as this, so far, so far.
I will say this though, I was at a Serpent meeting last Wednesday, I think it was last Wednesday, maybe it was the Wednesday before, no. Anyway, it was two weeks ago, maybe. And everybody knew that our planner had quit, okay? News travels fast and.
Sometimes.
Depending who you are, yeah.
And Wareham came, because Wareham was there. And Wareham said, oh, I wish you luck, we've been looking now for three months and we have no one yet. So planning people are very hard to get.
Okay. So can I just, can I say something before we get far from what Margaret just said? Can I just share something?
Sure.
What, my, my last statement and/or question, depending how I provided it, what I was implying is, I understand the $10,000, up to $10,000 and/or, I understand the algorithm, 11 hours per week, $10,000. Are we asking him, in exchange for that, to commit to us for 12 calendar months or a range of dates?
I understand. You can't do that without going through procurement.
Yeah.
If we ask him to commit for 12 months, then we have to pay him for 12 months.
No, it's not, it's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to have my cake and eat a few other things at the same time. It's unlikely that the position's going to be filled in a manner where the town and everybody in the board and that other boards is, wow, we were so lucky, we filled it in four weeks. Do we have a pulse on this gentleman and how long he'll be available to us? Because I suspect we're going to need him, what?
When he left and Christine came on board, that was a lengthy process too, of probably not eight months, but probably six months at that point. So he's, he's fairly local, we're still operating via Zoom, which, you know, really sealed the deal for him.
Nice.
It won't interfere, our meetings don't interfere with his nightly meetings. He is, his schedule is pretty flexible, so.
I, I, let me, let me, let me just finish with this. I am in no way opposed or, or suggesting that there's any opposition. It's quite the contrary. What I'm implying is, can we do anything to make sure he knows we're likely to need him longer than anybody thinks?
He's well aware of it.
Okay.
He's well aware of it, because he's worked as a planner.
Right.
And the other way we should be looking, the other thing we should look at is carefully look at the requirements that are required. You know, he particularly mentioned his second choice for his own replacement, that would be his direct, he'd be the direct supervisor, did not have the accreditation that Christine had, the AIS, AICS or, but had a JD and was working in planning with a JD. So I want us all to, you know, we're going to get the requirements, we're going to get a job description. I want you all to review it and then send it back to me.
Sure.
I can't talk with all of you, but I can talk to each of you.
Yeah.
I want you to consider that, because certain things like that, you know, I think a JD trumps almost every other accreditation. Maybe I'm putting too much emphasis on law school, but with the proper experience. I don't think letters after your name make you a good planner, just because you've got the letters after your name. That's all I'm saying.
Right, but a tenured, sorry, a tenured planner compared to a new law grad, two different things.
Oh, no, absolutely, but a, a tenured lawyer with.
Understood.
Legal background, I'm not sure why they would want to work as a town planner, but, you know, we got a habermaster that's got his JD with lots of law experience too, so.
Leave him alone.
He's a lawyer?
Yes.
Didn't know that.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, and he is in the court system.
That's right, Kevin should know.
You've got salt in your blood, you've got salt in your blood, sorry, Margaret.
Kevin, I have a question. And, and this is kind of an odd question to ask, but I've been going to different meetings, okay, in different towns. And I've come across actually one town planner, well, I've always known a town planner. and I've come across actually one town planner, well, I've always known a town planner, but he's an executive administrator, that I'm so impressed with. Do people kinda go and knock on the door of these people and ask?
I'm, I'm not your father.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking it nicely, okay?
I'm not your dad.
Okay.
That's what headhunters do, that's why Christine's not here.
Okay, all right.
Right?
Yeah?
Please, especially if you're that impressed with them, that, I mean, yeah. If he, if that person impresses you, I'm sure he's gonna impress us, so. So, yes.
Okay.
And I, I feel like I need to apologize to the three of you for not calling you when I got noticed that Christine, but she, I honestly have to say, yeah, not leaving the person, personality, leaving the feelings out of it. My knee-jerk reaction was to call you, but I was asked not to, and I, out of the respect I had for her, I didn't because she said, yes, I'm gonna call everybody immediately. And I felt horrible when I got your text, and probably ten minutes after your text, I got her call. Nick is like, what's going on?
I found out at nine PM, whatever night it was, but you were put in a bad, you were put in a bad spot.
That's right.
I'm, and I apologize, I would never, I will never do that again. It's unfortunate for the next, it's unfortunate for the next person who asked me that courtesy. It really is.
Well, I understand why you did it, but I was particularly upset, and I'll say it. Transparency, I was particularly upset because Kevin and I were very diligently and very hard to get her job back here again.
That's disappointing. Sorry.
We didn't expect her to stay forever, you know, that, and that's fine, the fact, you know, you move on, that's, I want what's best for people.
Right.
And that's up to them to decide. But to ask me not to say anything and then to not take action on that
Sure.
makes me feel bad.
Yeah.
So.
I just, I, I felt bad. I was caught flatfoot by somebody that I know and respect in the town. And he said, you don't know?
No.
That's what happened to me. That's exactly what happened to me.
And I was, I was also taken back that I was not the first person. Because I thought, you know, I, I was not the first person notified.
I was fortunate, I was the last one, so I didn't owe you folks any information, so there was a luxury. I wanna say something from the other room.
Yeah.
I, I almost wanna reach out to the young lady, the other candidate. That was a very, very tough situation. And I, I may have not said it word for word, but I just wanna reiterate, my decision was based on the fact that I know Hillier's character, and I have had some experience with him. And had it not been for that, I would not have been able to vote. They were both highly qualified.
Very good.
Very difficult.
The reason I did was because I'm, I like the fact that he's already involved in the town, okay? Town meeting and recreation, so he's already, he's taken a little step ahead of her because he's already spending his time in the town, and I think that's what swayed me, okay?
April's not far away. There'll be two votes, there'll be two seats on the planning board coming April, so.
Yeah.
You know, she's, you know, hopefully, you know-
I hope she goes well. Cause I do, I mean, I'll, I'll speak to her. I promoted the idea to her.
Okay.
Because I know her and she, I think she would be fantastic, one way or another, one time or another. She would add a lot of value to our board.
I wouldn't. I, I, and I just wanna reiterate, I do not disagree at all. I don't even know who's listening or who's watching, but for the love of God, you wanna know what was going through my mind? Nick, do you step down and make it possible for these two?
No.
That went through my mind because of how qualified.
No, no, no.
But that's what was going through my mind.
I know, Nick, but you're, you're learning a lot, and as Mr. McDonald said, it takes a long time to get, to know this. It's like, you know, it's not as easy, I'll, I'll tell you, this is much harder than-
Five-year term.
That's right, and it's much harder than the zoning board, cause I was on the zoning board. And zoning board, you have, it's legal. This is much harder, okay? So it takes a long time to learn, so please, don't say that.
One other thing that I haven't chimed in on, but I want the three of you to know how I feel about this, and I think it's consistent with your thoughts. I do love the idea of having an opportunity to be a technical review, and more so, I love the idea of the board knowing about something before it gets to us. I'm not talking about any particular church, did you hear my tone? But when a church decides to build a church near another church and picks the property and builds the building, and then goes to the other church and says, do you wanna join us? You can help pick out the paint. It's kinda how you feel sometimes when you see a project late in the stage, or when you kind of, it's already morphed into something, and now someone's just running it by you. How much is there left to talk about? So, I'm, although the youngest member on the board, in terms of time on the board, is the point I made, I love the idea of knowing about it sooner.
You are the youngest on the board too.
I tried to separate that, yeah. So, I think that's gonna be a great plus for us moving forward.
Well, and the other thing too, that we should talk about at another time, is that even the town of Dartmouth has to come before site plan review.
Absolutely.
And there are some things going through now that they have not, and that irritates me to no end.
Well, and that's one of the main reasons Christine cited her leaving, because we get no respect.
I think.
Yeah, she says it.
Where, where is it? Which paragraph?
Yeah, it is in there.
Where, where, how do, how do we uphold that? Is, is it come from that other room?
I believe it comes from that other room.
I, I believe it does.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, that's not, we have no power to do that.
No, the only thing we can do as a board is to, in the future, write a letter when we, and there's a, there's one now, there's two now going before that board. Is to write a letter and make it public that we oppose this kind of treatment. And I think that we're gonna have to do that, because if Joe Schmoel comes before me and he needs an A and R, and I, I make him jump through hoops, not an A and R, but whatever, and then you have a big project that this town's doing, and we have no say on parking, we have no say on anything, that's awful, okay? Cause everybody has to be treated equally. I'm very-
And it's a safety issue. I mean, this middle school parking lot should have been the one that was a red flag that shut it all down, because the school department foreman, whoever, you know, maintenance or whatever, just took it upon himself, yeah, just level the, you know, eliminate the curbs.
Yeah.
And he eliminated all the curbs, so now cars could just drive right into a parking lot. Curbs are there for safety, they're not just there for aesthetics. And that was a major issue. We wanted, we came close to trying to go to court to shut that school down until they did something. And that's why you see those pyramid-shaped walls there. That's traffic control, that's safety issues, and one individual spending thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, whatever that parking lot pavement job was, I'm sure it must've been close to six figures, took it upon himself, nope, didn't need to do planning board, didn't need anything, what I say goes. And that's why that parking lot looks like that.
Well, I, I'm, I'm known in my personal life and the, and the little bit of coaching I did to close gaps, before we write a letter and go down the public route, is it worthy of us to ask other members across the hall to hear us and to understand the gap that we're trying to close?
We need to, but the problem, I think the way it was, it, that should be coming from our town planner.
Yes.
In a kinder, gentler way, in a, not a-
Not an aggressive way.
Right.
Not, you know, we need, one of the things that I'm gonna be looking for in the next town planner is a team player.
Yeah.
We need somebody who's willing to co- cooperate, someone who's willing to bend.
Yeah.
Not the mighty oak that's gonna fall in a storm, but the small
Sure.
whatever that will bend.
Say it like this, if you wanna be hugged, don't throw a punch.
Right. No, it's true.
Right?
Yep.
But I mean, sometimes there may be this couple of new members on, on the select board, and maybe they're not even aware. That's why I suggested a letter.
The nice thing is we have a friend on the board.
Yeah.
We have two planning board members on that board now. So, that's two people that should be able to talk to and say, listen, this is a bad precedence.
Yeah.
You know, it was a major screw-up with the little shower houses down at the bridge.
Yep.
You know, she's, Christine cites the, the, the causeway, but we already had discussed-
She also cites the, the-
Shower house.
Parking lot.
The parking lot.
Yeah.
But again, we discussed that as a group.
Did discuss that.
And we discussed that over and over, and she just didn't agree with our decision as a group, that dingy spots or slips are going to reduce-
No, I'm talking about the school parking lot.
Oh, the school parking lot, okay.
She mentioned that.
She meant, yes. She, but she also mentions the Dais Landin,
Yeah, Dais Landin.
which I think we addressed as a board thoroughly.
Yeah.
You know, it, I, maybe somebody didn't agree with it, but we've had always agree. That's gonna save parking spots by not having trailers for those boaters. So, we're not gonna fix everything overnight, and I'm hoping, you know, let, let's get through this process and then reach out. Technical reviewer will start.
Right.
Because the school department's not gonna spend any money or time coming to the planning board if nobody's making them.
That's right.
And we can't make any department do anything until they screw up, and, well, okay, we're gonna have to-
But until we hire, yeah, but, but until we hire a planner, and every two weeks, one of us goes to technical review, and we say to them, you need to come. Yeah, you need to come before.
Well, it's not a field trip anymore.
Right.
It's not.
It's important that if, if somebody's picked, if you can't make it, then you gotta-
Get somebody else.
Get somebody else.
Now, Heidi said that tomorrow at ten AM.
Ross out by himself.
Heidi said what?
I have one meeting tomorrow at ten, so I can't.
Okay. I need to come in to talk to Ross. I cover the office tomorrow.
Okay.
But I can go in-
You can go to them?
Unless one of the two of you can make the technical reviewer meeting tomorrow.
What time?
Ten o'clock.
I need to at least come in, in touch base with Ross tomorrow to let him know
What's going, what's happened, yeah.
what's going on. I need to reach out to John Hare and-
My, my most difficult last-minute stuff is the fact that my office runs on appointments. If I know ahead of time, I can make changes, but at nine PM, it's very difficult.
Yeah.
That's the most, yeah. I wanna ask two questions really quick, and not to get, we're off topic, but any update on Chick-fil-A? Do you know where they're at?
No.
Okay, and then this is a separate question, it's a curiosity of mine. The Sylvia property, the Kentucky Fried Chicken that got shot down, is now an adjacent piece of property for sale, right? That wasn't at that time. Would such proposal and/or similar have more difficulty being denied if a newcomer proposer had more property, more square footage, and could change their setback some? It's a, it's a curiosity that I have, nobody in mind-
Wasn't setbacks?
Not, well, forgive me, not setbacks, but if they could reposition their pitch to us, are we at risk of seeing something like that and/or?
We're always at risk. They, they could've come back the next day.
Right. But it's aquifer.
I forgot about that. Never mind, never mind.
I forgot about the aquifer in this conversation, yeah. And, and there have been a couple incidents where somebody tries to cite precedent.
Right.
And they say, well, this lot has got sixty percent impervious cover on it, and it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Right.
We're doing, we're talking about today.
Right.
We're not gonna let anything happen like that.
Understood. No, the reason I'm asking-
I don't understand, I don't understand how you can wash a car
Right.
right by-
Me too.
Thank you.
A river.
Me too.
So, I, only, only because I've been meaning to ask this question ever since the adjacent property went up and I saw that listing, I said, boy, if they're still watching, they could come back at us.
Yeah, but they, I mean, we, that was wrong for traffic, that was wrong.
For all reasons. That was wrong for all reasons.
It was more than just adequate plot coverage.
Yeah.
And setbacks are one thing, okay? You can, you can give on setbacks, you really can. But you can't give on safety, that's the first thing, and the aquifer, well, you might give a little, but not sixty percent lock coverage. I mean, that's tough, when the pool woman, after I spoke, the woman got up and said she couldn't put a pool up because she couldn't, you know, her yard, so, I mean, you know, again, you gotta weigh it.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that.
Okay, we gotta get back to that.
Yeah, so-
Consultant.
Where are we?
The consultant, I think, we were gonna-
So, we're on the consultant. We need two, two separate votes on the consultant. One, from the board, to accept John Hanson. The second is to allow me, unless you choose not to, to be the one, the only one that signs for the contract. If you take that vote, then I can handle it. If not, all four of us would sign, and technically, I guess, all five of us once, once the new member gets sworn in. So, nomination.
Yeah, I make a motion that we, oh, sorry, we say, I make a motion that we accept the proposed consultant to act as an interim planner as described.
John Hanson.
And?
John.
You wanna toss them both together?
Well, you wanna do both in one vote?
Let's do them separate, just so Anthony's okay with it. So, I have a motion for John Hanson.
Second.
Second by Kevin Estes, all in favor. Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. So now the motion to-
I also make a motion that we approve our chair, Kevin Mello, to be the sole signature in respect to the contract that we will have with Mr. Hanson for interim planning, i.e. consulting.
I second.
Okay, motion made by Nick Cyclepatis, second by Margaret Sweet, all in favor. Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes? Kevin Mello, yes. The next one that we should really address would be who would sit on the interviewing committee. You know, in, in the room, I looked at Margaret, and then I'm like, oh, well, I should at least look at Kevin or, or Nick.
Well, I'm looking at both of them, so does that help you?
Yeah, okay, that helps. That helps. And I'm gonna step back.
Uh, I, let me tell you, I mean, I, I think that this is a very important decision, and I think the more experience you have with planners and planning, the better. And I don't have what you have, so I, I wanna see either of you two.
What about you? No?
I did the last one.
Okay.
And I know the last time, the chair, for some reason, didn't do it. I don't know if that was, they shouldn't, or, so, I'd love to see you.
Okay.
Do you want a motion?
Please.
All right.
I make a motion that Margaret Sweet is the interviewee per our board in regards to the new planner, planning position.
Okay, motion made by Nick Cyclepatis, second by Kevin Estes, all in favor.
Yes.
Kevin Estes, Margaret Sweet, yes.
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes.
Okay.
Have I forgotten anything? Anything else we need to talk about? Will, will, please give me feedback when you get-
The letter.
The, oh.
The job description. My concern is money. I mean, I'm gonna do a little research on my own, I encourage everyone else to. See what other towns are paying.
Just call Serpent.
Okay.
Just call Serpent, they'll tell you. They have a list.
Okay.
Okay.
For each town?
Oh, yeah. I, I went-
I mean, I know it's public information, every employee-
It's public information. I, I went to a meeting I shouldn't have gone to. I went, because it was for commissioners only. But I wanted just, and I left early because it didn't involve me, but I was amazed at what they can do for you. So, I would suggest calling them.
Amazed at what Serpent can do for you?
Oh, the information they have. It's amazing, okay? I mean, like that gentleman's saying to me, oh, we feel bad for you, Margaret, because we know what it takes and we know that she left. I mean, I was like a week after.
Yeah.
How did they know that that fast? Really?
The Chatham is, Chatham's not part of Serpent, right?
Yes, huh, that's why I'm there.
Chatham is that far, all the way down there?
Oh, Chatham? Oh, I don't know about Chatham, I'm sorry, no, but, but.
No, I'm just curious.
I'm just worried about who, last time we did this, if I recall, we were competing against Fairhaven too.
We're competing right now, I think, against Ware, uh, Wareham, and possibly Westport too.
Maybe, yeah, I think, I think what-
Repositions?
Yeah, planning boards.
Re-planning, three planners in the middle?
Line all three interviews up in one day.
Well, because it's very hard to get a planner.
Yeah.
That's why last time it took so long.
Well, and that's why I, I encourage us to consider, to consider the fact that because, you know, the, the initials after the name aren't the end-all and be-all.
I think experience is, is more important.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, you need something to hang your hat on.
Right.
You can't, you've got, you can't just have, you know.
Well, Christine was a good planner, but it took her a while, cause she was used to the rules in Rhode Island. So it did take her a little while to to, you know, learn the rules in Massachusetts, cause they're a little different, okay, but.
One of the things that I appreciated is, at least, I didn't, again, I don't have the depth of experience over time, but the fact that I felt like one of the things that that we started implementing was a protocol that has to be stuck to. And when do we, you know, refer things administratively to to the planner or not? We're only gonna, only give layups and and not just say, oh, yeah, you take care of it. The the fact that we have protocols, they got stuck together, they they got uh put out there and the, all the groups started to work together on the same page, like, and understanding why it's important that we talk about lot coverage, not just for the environment, well, guess what, it it, there there's also some other reasons that cost people money. Um, so I I I think that uh, I and I I don't know how you ask that in a, in an interview, or or or, you know, somebody's intestinal fortitude to stand up and do the right thing and say, no, this is the protocol, sorry.
Yes, that that was what I liked a lot about Christine, she she was the good old boy, oh, come on, you know, so and so would do it for me, or the past guy would do it for me, or just sign off, you don't, you you're, no, that's, we have to stick with somebody that's strong will. And I, you know, I, that's one of the reasons I wanted Christine to come back, her strong will, her, you know, she she was taking a beating, and unfortunately, it took her, took a toll on her after a while.
It did.
Um, I I like to think that we supported her as a board, you know, and said, yes, keep going, keep, keep.
We did support her.
Stand up and fight for us, but um.
As a board, though, there will be some opposition, right, that's the point of the board.
Right.
That's, that's why, that's why we collaborate with each other, and agree and disagree, yeah.
But, um.
But Christine, Christine had a, Christine had it hot also, because there were certain contractors in the town and certain people in this town that, uh because, and I hate to say this, because she was a woman, they thought it should have been a man.
That's unfortunate.
It is unfortunate.
That's very unfortunate.
Well, I can also imagine that they were used to getting their way.
That and that's.
Well.
Um.
But anyway.
There's no patience for that right now.
Yeah, there is, no, in today's world, there is, but uh, no, I think that we've done a lot tonight, so that's good.
When is the next meeting, and I'm going to um likely tell you that I'm gonna be absent, I'm leaving next week.
So, um, I believe our next scheduled meeting is on.
Two weeks from today?
If if we're following that suit, I will not be available, that would be the fifth of August. Um, so we may have to do a little fast moving, a little relocating of that meeting to the twelfth, will you, will you be back?
I will not, I get back um in town on the eighteenth of August, so for number purposes, if there's nothing pressing, I don't know if we wanna shoot for the nineteenth, um depending what the agenda looks like.
Okay, um.
And how soon will Helio, how how soon will we have the additional member, as soon as he gets sworn?
With within two weeks, yeah, he he's just gotta go see Sarah.
Okay.
Um, that, and that's fine, he's gotta do his online ethics training, um.
Well, how about you, cause you're the vice chair, are you, are you gonna be around if he's not around?
On what day?
Kevin, when he, uh.
So, we don't wanna do a meeting on the fifth, because both Nick and I won't be here.
Oh, okay, alright.
So, the twelfth, it will just be the three of us plus Helio, so there'd be.
The twelfth then.
The twelfth.
Has to be changed to the twelfth.
But, what Nick is saying, if there's nothing.
We could go to the nineteenth.
Go to the nineteenth, and then pick up from there.
Well, that's fine with me.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking you folks to do that for me, I'm just suggesting that if the agenda isn't critical and time where the.
That would put us back on our schedule for the rest of the year.
Back as a group.
That would keep us on schedule because of of the, every other week. So, okay, we'll, we'll be in touch about that, um. I'll run through that with with uh Ross.
I have to double check and make sure that I can make the twelve.
Okay.
Uh, cause I know on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, I'm gonna be in Jersey, and I don't know if that starts really on Monday night.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, alright, we may, if we have something that's a timeframe, we may have to do either the fifth or the twelfth with the alternate.
Say that again?
I'll double check on it.
Okay.
So if if we're gonna have two people absent on any given day, we would bring in the, in as a public hearing.
Right.
We'd bring in the alternate, three people can have a meeting. We tend to give the candidates or the people, the the, I call them customers, but the applicants coming in, um, the choice, hey, you only have three people, you know, one of them doesn't like it, you're out of luck. You wanna leave it in it on that date?
Is it always a majority, or is it at least three votes?
It depends, it depend, it it would be the majority, certain items require two thirds, so then we couldn't have it with only three people. So, why couldn't you?
Two thirds of the attendees, or two thirds of the whole board?
Oh, of the entire board, okay, confused me for a minute.
Out of the attendees.
Say, went to math.
Yeah.
I don't know, of of the board.
Okay.
Got it.
Two thirds of the board, so.
So, just so I have my dates correct, right now, you're shooting for the fifth?
No, right now, I'm gonna wait to see what we have, we're gonna, and find out from Kevin. Is that certain that you're not here on the twelfth, or you're not?
Uh, I don't know, it's not certain, I I know that I have to, like, the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I'm in Jersey, and I don't know if I'll leave, if it, if it starts, if it really starts with a dinner on Monday.
Okay, alright, well.
It's not like a golf trip or something, it's a business thing.
No, no, no.
Why don't we just make it to the nineteenth and make it easy?
We we can shoot for the nineteenth as of now, that way you're not stuck in the meeting, but.
I'll let you know, I can, I'll find out tomorrow morning.
Easy enough, okay.
Okay.
I'm just, if we go to the nineteenth, it would just be like skipping a meeting, we should be on accident schedules, so.
And since we have to make them, you know, we have to agree on it now, I I think just do the nineteenth.
Let's do it.
I'll shoot for the nineteenth.
Excellent.
If something comes up, I'll let you guys.
Right, let's just shoot for the nineteenth.
Okay.
It's not like they're banging down at the doors right now.
It it's not that I don't wanna be part of a Zoom meeting, but right now, it is four A M in Greece, so I'd rather not be part of the Zoom meeting.
Well, you come back, you just be getting home from the nightclubs.
We need to make a motion?
Do we, uh, did we cover everything?
No.
Uh, yeah, I, well, subcommittee reports.
Did we, uh, I don't think we, we did not acknowledge and file correspondence.
Right, we did not.
Uh, move to acknowledge and file.
Second.
Correspondence.
Motion made by Kevin Estes, second by Nick Cyclepatis, all in favor, Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis.
Yes.
Margaret Sweet.
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes.
Free information and new business.
Yep, um. We already discussed the zoning board appeals earlier, uh, any subcommittee?
No.
No, the uh, uh, the one that I was supposed to go to didn't have enough members, and so there was no meeting.
Okay, pretty much everything that we've discussed is my chairman's report, so, um, acknowledge and file?
Yes, make a motion.
Motion by Margaret Sweet.
Second.
Second by Kevin Estes, all in favor, Margaret Sweet.
Yes.
Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis.
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. Number seven.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Kevin Estes.
Second.
Second by Nick Cyclepatis, all in favor, Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis.
Yes.
Margaret Sweet. Kevin Mello, yes.